Good afternoon Commissioners and thank you for your time and attention here as I walk through the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan. And thank you Carol for that introduction. Carol said a word in her introduction which I hope bears out throughout the course of this presentation and that was holistic. She just went through all of the agency partners and community partners and local stakeholders we've been working closely with throughout this process and I really hope that shows through in the presentation this afternoon. So first I'll provide a little introduction, what the plan is, what you should expect to hear today, walk through a little bit of the neighborhood context, not only physically and geographically, but also talk about the people, the demographics, the social side. Talk through the plan and process. As Carol had mentioned, we've been doing this for nearly three years at this point. So sort of walking you through how we got to where we're at today and then ultimately what are the draft recommendations that we've come to through this planning process and of those specifically what are the land use actions we're here to certify today. So the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan is really more than a sum of its parts. Certainly the lenses through which we've been doing our planning work include housing, community resources, jobs and businesses, access mobility circulation, and of course zoning and land use, but none of these things have been thought about in isolation and in fact as they all come together really do fulfill the vision of the future of the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Corridor. So next discussing a little bit of the neighborhood context and where the study area actually sits. The study area itself is about a two mile stretch along Jerome Avenue in the southwest Bronx. Just to sort of give you a little bit of context here, the study area sits just east of Bronx Community College in the north, just east of the recently opened and fabulous if I may say so High Bridge, and just a couple of blocks north of Yankee Stadium to the south. It passes through Community Boards 4, 5, as well as a little bit of 7 although the majority of the study area are included in Community Boards 4 and 5. And as you can see through these images, just to show a little bit of the corridor's context, really it's a thin corridor that travels as I mentioned over two miles and it is surrounded by residential communities and residential development. There are many neighborhoods throughout the Jerome Avenue Corridor and the planning work that we've initiated here really touches many of them and these include University of Heights and Morris Heights to the north, as well as High Bridge, Concourse, Mount Eden to the south. And as you can see in these images, just show a little bit about the differing context. The top image is Edward L. Grant Highway which is just west off of the corridor predominantly residential in character and then when you move east to along the corridor predominantly commercial uses along Jerome Avenue, which I'll speak to a little more specifically later in the presentation. As far as the people, the demographics here are largely made up of Latino population, African-American population, this is a large immigrant community in communities. There are over 100,000 Latino immigrants in the communities along Jerome Avenue, over 77,000 of those are Dominicans. And there's also a large and growing West African population. In fact, one of the largest and fastest growing African immigrant groups anywhere in the city are located in the corridor itself. Household incomes here are lower than the city as a whole or the borough itself and hover around $26,000. And the health outcomes that are suffered in these communities are oftentimes negative. The health lens is one that has been instilled in us to really take the forefront and all the planning work we're doing, be it land use, public realm, workforce and economic development. We've really been told and learned very fast that health is a prime concern and a prime topic when we're doing our planning work. As far as the physical geography, Jerome Avenue is a transit corridor. The elevated Ford train that runs throughout the study area is certainly one of the defining physical characteristics, but it is also flanked by the B&amp;D trains just to the east that run beneath the Grand Concourse. As far as some of the auto-centric infrastructure, the Major Deegan is located west just off of the Harlem River and the Cross Bronx Expressway at this point is a depressed portion of the expressway and literally cuts through Community Boards 4 and 5 and sort of severs that continuity along Jerome Avenue. So certainly a challenge and hurdle to think about in our planning work. The land uses, the neighborhoods that surround Jerome Avenue are largely residential. In fact, over 70% of the land uses in the neighborhoods that surround Jerome Avenue are residential and the housing types that make up this land use are predominantly multifamily apartment buildings, walk-ups and elevator apartments. Although I will mention there are some pockets of lower scale 1 and 2 unit developments, majority of which are multifamily. This sticks in stark contrast to the rezoning area itself, which are made largely of mixed use, commercial office and auto-related uses. I would point out here that auto-related uses while, you know, many conjure the image of the auto shop when they think of Jerome Avenue and rightly so, they are a highly visible use, but again, in terms of land uses, they make up about 15% of the primary study area or rezoning area. And this is reflected in the zoning. As Carol mentioned in her introduction, these are uses, a service corridor that really sprung up in response to the densification and building up of the surrounding neighborhoods and Jerome Avenue itself did serve as sort of the service corridor to these neighborhoods. This was then formally codified into the zoning in 1961 where the C-8 districts and the M districts along the corridor have really frozen these land uses in place. And through our study, we're now taking a fresh look at the land uses along the corridor to think through what the most appropriate uses are, not only for 2017 but beyond as we recognize our city is growing and our borough is growing fastest among any other borough. And as I mentioned, the residential nature of the surrounding land uses, I'd be remiss to mention housing affordability. In these neighborhoods that surround Jerome Avenue, we see some of the highest rates of rent-regulated housing units of anywhere in the city. Over 2/3 of housing units in the neighborhoods that surround Jerome Avenue are protected in some form or another, be it government assistance, public housing, or rent stabilization. And I would also mention that since 2003, the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, one of our key partners in this initiative, have invested tremendously in these areas, building or preserving over 15,000 units of affordable housing. But what does all this mean for the ground? What does this look like when you're actually in the place? As I mentioned, the elevated rail to many really defines this corridor and it's the first thing one might think about when they think about Jerome Avenue. But what we've learned through this process and what has become so evident to us, that really the defining characteristic of these communities are the people. While a diverse range of perspectives and opinions I assure you, there is a common thread in that when you talk to the folks in these communities and you do your planning work alongside them, their care and love of their communities really shines through and that's something we hope that we're being respectful of and something we take to heart in the planning work we're doing. But there are also tremendous fiscal assets in the area. Just west of Jerome Avenue Corridor is the recently opened High Bridge, a phenomenal pedestrian connection between Washington Heights in Manhattan and the High Bridge Neighborhood of the Bronx, providing not only access to the A&amp;C train on the Washington Heights side and the Ford train on the Bronx side, but also some of the most breathtaking vistas for my money anywhere in the city. Just north at the Aqueduct Walk, Aqueduct Walk is a linear park that spans between Kingsbridge Road to the north and Burnside Avenue to the south, just west of Jerome Avenue, and is actually built upon the Croton Aqueduct and provides a much-needed linear connection, a linear pedestrian connection through the University Heights Neighborhood of the Bronx. The Bronx Community College, one of the finest institutions we have in the borough and one of the finest examples of urban architecture and campus architecture really anywhere in the city. And when one thinks of architecture, of course, you have to think of the Grand Concourse and the Art Deco apartments that line the marvelous Grand Concourse that flanks Jerome Avenue just a short walk to the east. The corridor itself however, as I mentioned, is a predominantly 1 and 2 story commercial corridor. You can see from this image, the residential makeup and character of the neighborhoods... oh, and I stopped the presentation. Okay, just to the west of the corridor as well as to the east, but along the majority of the corridor itself are these commercial uses, these low-scale commercial uses. And Jerome Avenue is a valley. One thing I didn't mention that I should have earlier are the Step Streets. This photograph is taken not from a window of an apartment building, but from one of the really unique pedestrian amenities and assets that are found throughout the corridor and those are the Step Streets that connect Jerome Avenue itself with some of the higher neighborhoods that do surround it. And I hope it's evident in this photograph as well, just the residential character of the surrounding context. And albeit a variety of housing types, the overwhelming condition is multifamily apartment buildings. The corridor itself however, stark contrast, here's an example of 1-story commercial uses built literally right next to the transit station. So where transit accessibility is literally the most prominent, the land uses are not reflective of being able to capitalize on that asset in its current form today. The corridor is also aligned with auto uses and garage uses and oftentimes, and oftentimes these land uses do have quality of life issues associated with them and issues that affect the pedestrian realm such as cars parked on the sidewalks, some of the works filling out onto the sidewalks, which is not only an issue from a pedestrian standpoint, but also an indication that the land uses today may not serve the businesses in the way that they need them to be served. Jenny Jerome Park, this is an example of some of the recent investment that's taken place in the corridor throughout the years. Jenny Jerome Park was the beneficiary of CPI, the CPI Initiative, the Community Parks Initiative, which was a program established in 2014 to really provide physical upgrades to parks in traditionally and historically underserved areas. This work at Jenny Jerome Park has been completed, but I would also mention that two other parks in the area, Walton Park in University Heights, as well as Ogden-Plimpton Park in High Bridge, are also in the midst of their own CPI processes and construction on those open spaces should begin shortly as well. Again, another image of the Step Street connecting the Jerome Avenue Valley to the surrounding residential uses. But again, the elevated train really defines this corridor. Be it from a top or below, the Ford train and the access it provides is really a defining characteristic. Here the Cross Bronx Expressway as I mentioned earlier, cuts through laterally both Community Boards 4 and 5 and you can see Jerome Avenue and the elevated rail that literally has to bridge across it, which presents a unique planning challenge for us to think about. Pedestrian realm is challenging in this corridor. Some of that is due to the land uses I mentioned, but some of it is simply due to lack of appropriate infrastructure. But as all of this demonstrates I think, is that there are tremendous amount of issues and opportunities in this area and really this gave us the springboard for the planning study that we undertook in concert with local elected officials, local stakeholders and of course residents themselves. And that's what I'd like to talk to you a little bit more about now, is the actual planning process and how we got here based on all of those conditions and what we've learned from the work. So as Carol mentioned, we started this process formally launching in September 2014, so almost three years to the month we began this work and has gone through iterations of public outreach, be it goal-setting workshops, visioning events, releasing zoning framework, prepping the community I should say for environmental review and brings us here today to certify the land use proposal. So we started with data gathering and analysis as many planning studies do. We made sure to feed that information that we were learning on the ground back to the community constantly to ensure that what we were understanding and what we were learning was accurate. This is actually a council member Gibson's Tenant Council meeting, this would have been two or three years ago now and we've learned tremendously through these small group meetings, which really set us, set the stage for us to more formally feed back to the public through a series of open houses and information sessions, really feeding back the existing conditions as we understood them. And through these, the information sharing workshops, we were able to really start to define issues formally with the community. From there, was able to launch a goal-setting workshop. So we took in all of the issues that we learned about the area through all the work we'd been doing and conversations we'd been having with the community, to formally actually setting goals and then voting on them and prioritizing those goals that would essentially set the foundation for the planning work that we're doing and I'll share those goals with you in a little bit here. From the goal-setting workshop, we stepped into visioning. So the goals were a very broad look at what are the plethora of issues and opportunities in the neighborhood and then the visioning was essentially, well how do we make these work for the actual physicality aspect, the physical aspects of the space and the land uses and zoning that tie in so intimately with those goals and issues. And so through this workshop, we were able to really define a zoning framework and get the feedback we needed to add to our professional lens and expertise to map out what we believed were the appropriate zoning districts for the Jerome Avenue Corridor. And then we shared those. This is our zoning framework being shared in November 2015. So this has been around for a while and we've had plenty of opportunities to opine and talk through exactly the goals of the zoning framework and learn from people their reactions to the zoning framework for quite some time. That being said, the zoning itself as you all well know, is not the most simple process, there are complexities involved with it and we wanted to make sure that we were bringing the community along with us as we were preparing for things like environmental review, making sure that the public really understood that our door was always open to answer any questions or concerns that they had about the process and about the agenda of the city and what we were really planning. From there, we did a number of summer tabling events. This was a prioritization exercise that we undertook last summer, really laying out all the possibilities of strategies and recommendations and asking people, in a world where there are limited resources, where would you put your dollars? Where do you put your priorities in crafting recommendations? Which really helped us understand again the priorities of the community and how they aligned with the land use and zoning goals. But of course our interest doesn't stop at a zoning map and we've done tremendous work. This is a charrette that we were joined with Department of Transportation, Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as the Department of Health to talk about that Cross Bronx Interchange that I mentioned earlier. The Cross Bronx and Jerome Avenue Interchange is a really unique and challenging piece of infrastructure where the Cross Bronx entrance and exit ramps meet Jerome Avenue itself and really there's some creative thinking that needs to get done. So of course, we were looking to do that with the community and thus the charrette. And then more easily is this summer. As you can see here, we've started to map out our recommendations and start to think through how these strategies really lay out across the corridor and ask people to comment on them and to let us know what they think about them as we're preparing to enter environmental review. And in fact, I think we still have a couple of these exercises that we'll be doing, or excuse me, entering the formal land use review process, but we have more of these exercises that will be happening even after certification. So it's something of course, we're dedicated to and what we've always said is that the recommendations and strategies that are associated with the plan don't necessarily start or stop with U-LR. These are all things that work together to really create the vision of the place. So with that, I'd like to shift gears and talk about the planning recommendations and goals that I had mentioned earlier. Really we set up five buckets for lack of a better word, into how we think about the goals envisioned for the corridor and these buckets or categories are housing, economic and workforce development, parks, open space and transportation, community resources, and of course land use and zoning. So the goals for housing are to provide sustainable and high-quality affordable housing and a range of incomes. One of the things that we've always said from the start of our process is that economic diversity and the highest quality of affordable housing are important to the work that we'll be doing. But just as if not more important, is the protection of tenants and the improvement of housing quality. The goals for economic and workforce development include creating opportunities for more diverse retail, support of the auto-related businesses and workers along the corridor, the promotion of small business and entrepreneurship regardless of building type, and of course helping residents in area and local community members prepare for jobs and career growth with appropriate training and skills development opportunities. Parks, open space and transportation, the goals that we reached with the community and of course in concert with our sister agencies, are to guarantee that every neighborhood has green streetscapes and quality parks, ensure that these quality open spaces are within a 10-minute walk of the community or of any one resident, to promote safe and walkable conditions along Jerome Avenue underneath that elevated train, and to make sure that the streets are safe and attractive for everyone, folks of all mobility concerns, be it able-bodied or pushing strollers or wheeling chairs. Community resources, really sort of a broader look at neighborhood, at the neighborhoods at large, but these include meeting the educational, health and service needs of the communities along Jerome Avenue, as well as just generally improving quality of life and health. Again, using those lenses as sort of a paramount screen for all the works we, all the work we're doing. So from all of these, we drafted key strategies. The first, I'll walk you through some of the public realm strategies that are associated with the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan and these include first and foremost, creating a better environment underneath the elevated rail along Jerome Avenue, working closely with Department of Transportation to ensure that the streetscape along Jerome Avenue is conducive to a streetscape that is cohesive and continuous and attractive. Improving streetscapes along major corridors like Edward L. Grant, which is a major connection between Jerome Avenue and the University Heights Neighborhood just north of the Cross Bronx as it travels along the High Bridge Neighborhood. Strengthening retail corridors throughout the district. So Jerome Avenue of course is a two-mile north-south stretch of a corridor, but throughout it, at 167th Street, at 170th Street, at Mount Eden, Tremont Avenue, Burnside Avenue and 183rd Street are all lateral connections that are mapped with commercial uses today that serve as connections between the neighborhoods to the west, Jerome Avenue and then beyond to the Grand Concourse. As well as improving the underpasses. So these, the same corridors as they pass, or as they come up to the Grand Concourse actually pass underneath it in many cases and in some of the, some of the areas actually provide connections to the B&amp;D train at those stations, but today they're largely in disrepair and could use beautification and improvements. Same goes for the Step Streets. As I mentioned earlier, the Step Streets are a unique asset and we really do think of them as an asset here, but ones that need a fresh look and make sure that they are, you know, performing to the standards that we would expect for any neighborhood in the city. And of course, the Cross Bronx Expressway Interchange. How do we improve pedestrian safety as well as knit together some of the open spaces that are mapped and used right along that interchange? It really is an interesting and unique confluence of these factors that come together, but making sense out of them all and investing in them is something that we'll need to do to ensure that that gap is literally bridged between the community boards. And of course advocate for accessibility along the transit lines. There are no escalator or elevator services available between 161st Street and Fordham Road on either of these lines, so doing what we can in this planning process to best advocate for accessibility along the lines will be important. And then finally, mapping appropriate zoning districts to really bring all of these public realm strategies together and bring the vibrancy and density to the street where they belong and to map these densities along the transit corridors to really stitch these all together. And I would note that yesterday, in my, I think my last minute attempt to make sure everything was all in order and perfect, I accidentally deleted a slide that said open spaces and surely I would be remiss if I didn't mention capitalizing on key and strategic open spaces, be it Aqueduct Park to the north, Corporal Fisher Park in the High Bridge Neighborhood, which I'll talk to a little bit more in more detail in the future, and then Grant Park, just south of 170th Street, east of the Grand Concourse, we all feel are phenomenal opportunities to be explored for the improvement and enhancement of open spaces. As far as strategies related to housing, really it's a multi-pronged approach. It's building new housing, it is preserving existing housing and it is protecting tenants. Certainly the land use actions that we'll be learning a little bit more about here today are in line with the production of new affordable housing units and in fact, one of the things that we often hear from folks is, you know, I qualify for that building and I've applied, but I just can't get in. And that's a story you hear over and over and over again, which is a clear indication to us that there's a lack of supply and there, something needs to be done to provide more opportunities for affordable new construction, which we believe this project is taking the steps toward doing. But preservation, as I mentioned earlier, really the key component, the housing component or housing strategy in this project is preservation. Over 2/3 of the existing housing units in the neighborhoods that surround Jerome Avenue are rent protected, so working with HPD to make sure they stay that way and having HPD proactively reach out to any property owner whose regulatory or affordability agreement is set to expire in the coming years is something that they have been feverishly pursuing and in fact have targeted over 100 properties to be included in their preservation initiative. I can let them speak to the exact phrasing of exactly what the program is, but the point is that we're doubling down on preservation efforts and really making sure that property owners have access to the information they need and the resources they need to maintain their affordable properties. And in fact, I would also mention that HPD's recently launched their Landlord Ambassador Program and has enlisted local community group Northwest Bronx Community and Clergy Coalition to help property owners navigate that space to ensure that they have access to the resources they need to ensure affordability. And then finally tenant support. So the units are one thing, which are certainly a driving force behind this plan, but the people that live in the units are arguably the most important and making sure that they're protected, the quality of housing that they are subject to is of the highest quality possible is paramount. Within the last two years, the Tenant Support Unit of HRA has knocked on thousands of doors and opened thousands of cases for tenant support and have in fact, they've been able to support over, or nearly 3,000 tenants just within the last two years alone. And likewise, the HPD, HPD has been doing block sweeps of distressed properties, making sure that anytime there's an issue with the quality of housing, going through to do detailed assessments of those properties, they've visited over 400 to date, they've opened detailed surveys on over 90 of them and in fact have taken then a number of those, or they've pursued active litigation. So really taking landlords to task and making sure that everybody here understands what is lawful and legal and what is expected of them. And then economic development as a strategy. Certainly the auto businesses and workers along the corridor are an incredibly important stakeholder group for this planning process. Albeit 15% of the land uses along the corridor are auto-related, that doesn't in any way diminish the importance of this sector of the economy. So doing everything we can to support those workers, be it access to increased training opportunities and education opportunities, or supporting those businesses by making sure that they have the connections they need to the already robust suite of city programs that the Department of Small Business Services provides, including lease negotiation, including business planning, among many others. And this sort of dovetails with work we're doing on the workforce side. Along with SBS, but also the Mayor's Office of Workforce Development, Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs and the Department of Health, we've begun to convene a series of meetings with a number of local CBOs in the area to really assess out what is the best way for these actors to be referring locally, to be connecting and forming a network locally and to be connecting their constituents with job opportunities at a local level as they come online. We've worked with, there've been over 20 organizations represented, from some of the tenant organizers that we work with, to some of the employers like Bronx Lebanon Hospital, Montefiore, but also community organizations and educational institutions. Davidson Community Center and WEDCO come to mind, Bronx Community College comes to mind. But what's clear in all of this is, there is already a robust set of these organizations working and if they all sort of got on the same page, and some of them already are certainly, but how can we strengthen their networks to really increase the synergy throughout them all? And then the last strategy I'll mention is the Neighborhood 360 work undertaken by the Department of Small Business Services. This has been a phenomenal program that has been undertaken and many, many of the components already implemented that have looked at the entirety of the commercial landscape for all of the land uses along Jerome Avenue, done detailed survey work and interviews with merchants and residents along the corridor to really figure out, well what are the biggest issues and opportunities from a retail landscape perspective that we can tap into through this process? Through that work, and this is the cover of that assessment, so this was the Commercial District Needs Assessment that was published, through that work, the city has recently granted nearly a million dollars to local organizations, Davidson Community Center and WEDCO, to start implementing some of the recommendations that came out of that plan. So these include things like merchant organizing, placemaking, improvements in the public realm and identity, identity programs, shop local programs. It's really been an incredible effort and we're excited to see all of these next steps as they continue to unfold. And this leads us to the planning recommendations. So of course, we think of zoning and land use as recommendations just like the public realm, housing... realm, housing or economic development, and that's what I'll be talking through and what we'll be certifying at today's meeting. And so the goals of the land use, the land use category of the planning effort are to create zoning districts that are conducive to fulfilling the vision of Jerome Avenue, to focus distinct nodes of density where appropriate, and to leave strategic areas zoned for their current uses in an effort to maintain some of that economic diversity that we see along the corridor. And again, the reasons that we're undertaking the zoning component of this study are because there are issues that we feel are brought upon by the current zoning and land uses. This includes the prohibition of residential uses. And as we are trying to promote affordable housing development as a key part of this study, one of the things we understand is that lack of sites is becoming an increasing impediment to new construction. And where districts don't currently permit residential uses, looking to rezone those so that they can. The land uses have occasionally negative or detrimental effects on quality of life. There are commercial use limitations, which I'll speak to in a little bit more detail, at Burnside and Tremont avenues. And there are difficulties for development imposed by irregular lots that are, that are found throughout the study area, as well as the elevated rail infrastructure itself. So as I mentioned, pardon me, the existing zoning is really predominantly residential with the majority of zoning districts being mapped as R7 districts or R8 districts today. The difference, of course, is the corridor itself. And you know, the zoning in 1961 really locked in the land use of the heavy commercial and light industrial uses that we see along the corridor today. So all of these things together, we formed a zoning framework that really is sort of derived from a number of factors. First of which is promoting development along or at the stations, right? Mapping nodes of density at the convergence of wide streets where there are real opportunities to create places. Promote opportunities along major corridors, be it Edward L. Grant, 170th Street, or McCoom's Road to the south, or Burnside Avenue to the north. Where are these wide prominent streets mapping appropriate residential districts and commercial overlays to match? And speaking of Burnside and Tremont, mapping a full commercial district here. For anyone that's been up to these retail corridors today, they'll tell you these are very vibrant and lively retail corridors, the ones that we feel have so much more potential. And by mapping a full commercial district, we hope to realize that over the next several years. And then all throughout, sort of stitching all of these strategies together by mapping mid-density residential districts along the entirety of the corridor, again, with commercial uses and non-residential ground floor uses, to really create that cohesiveness along Jerome Avenue itself. And then to maintain existing zoning at key locations. As I mentioned, there is an economic vitality and vibrancy in a lot of the commercial uses along the corridor, and proposing zoning districts that really respect that is a key component of our zoning framework. And as I mentioned, mapping a, mapping a commercial, or excuse me, a special district here that really would allow for flexibility and new rules for lots fronting elevated rail as well as some of the irregular lots. So the land use actions in total that we're here to certify today are zoning text amendments, mapping the special Jerome Avenue district, as well as mandatory inclusionary housing district, zoning map amendments that will range from between R7A to R9A residential districts, and to de-map Corporal Fisher Place, which as I'll speak to in a little greater detail later, is an unbuilt street that sits adjacent to property currently in possession or in ownership of the Parks Department. So creating opportunities for parkland by de-mapping Corporal Fisher Place. So as I mentioned, the special district will be mapped coterminous with the zoning map amendments of this, of the proposed zoning map amendments, and it'll really do four things. One, it'll institute lower base heights along the elevated rail, ensuring that no, no development that fronts the elevated rail will have a base height higher than two stories or 30 feet, and at that point, would require a 10-foot setback before, before rising to its maximum height. And I would also mention here that we're allowing an additional two stories of height for lots fronting the elevated rail, really to make up for the loss of square footage that we're now requiring based on the lower base height. We've done several zoning tests with this, and what we learned is we probably didn't need to increase the height, but what would, what would happen is you would get these very tight boxes with no architectural variety or articulation, and by allowing a little additional height, really would promote architectural flexibility in much better buildings. The same, the same sort of logic applies to the irregularly shaped lots, ensuring that we are relaxing street wall requirements and providing height waivers where the development of actual building architecture, block-and-plank architecture, would be able to be realized in these challenging lots. And then the special district will also map a hotel, or will include a hotel special permit, requiring that hotel development will be made to receive a special permit before the housing goals of the study have been met, and will map mandatory ground floor uses throughout the commercial corridors, ensuring active ground floor uses. So the first thing I'll mention in terms of the actual districts, we are proposing R7A and R7D mid-density residential districts along the corridor with commercial overlays. Today, the surrounding character is largely of R7 character. The corridor itself is largely C8 districts and would be allowed residential densities between 4.6 in the R7A and 5.6 in the R7D. Showing you the current condition of the corridor itself, underdeveloped land uses that don't, that don't match the potential for being right adjacent, literally, to one of the major transit thoroughfares in the city. Again, one-story commercial next to Jerome Avenue. But just off the corridor again, multifamily apartment buildings. What we're mapping really does fit this context and this character. In addition to the R7A districts, we'll be mapping, oh, excuse me, and this just goes to show the sort of current condition and by bringing that neighborhood character literally to the train station, what can be achievable, not only through the land use actions and subsequent development, but also public realm improvements and safety improvements at the streets. We'll be mapping, we'll be proposing R8A districts along major corridors, including Edward L. Grant, which today is an R71 corridor, and 170th Street, as well as McCoom's Road, and mapping contextual districts where R8, or excuse me, where R8 districts already exist today at 183rd Street, at Mount Eden, as well as 167th Street. So again, the residential FARs that are allowed in the R8s today are already 7.2. We'd be mapping R8A with overlays that would be, be able to achieve up to 7.2 residential FARs with heights of 145 feet away from the elevated rail and 165 feet along the elevated rail. Here's a photo, as I mentioned, Edward L. Grant, mapped as R71 today, but you can see, as you can see, really would stand to benefit from added, added opportunity for increased density. Along the corridor, the one-to-two-story commercial uses. This image I wanted to spend just a second on because I think it's indicative of the transit richness, really, of the neighborhoods, not only along the 4 train, but also along the BD. This photograph, excuse me, this photograph is taken from 170th Street looking west down to Jerome Avenue, and as you can see, this is right where the 170th Street BD stop is. It's, you know, approximately two- to three-minute walk between those corridors. And this is where the Grand Concourse is at its furthest from Jerome Avenue. So really, thinking about not only the 4 train, but also the BD as such crucial connections via mass transit. And again, the wide streets where they come together, mapped next to predominantly residential districts today, we feel are appropriate matches of this character. So today, where there are these voids, where the land uses don't match the potential of the area, by mapping land uses that would, we can really see the creation of places in the added vibrancy and vitality of new units and new opportunities in the area. As I mentioned earlier, a full commercial district up at Burnside Avenue and Tremont Avenue, we're proposing a C4 4D district, which would have commercial FARs of 3.4. But I should mention that this district is also an R8A equivalent, matching, again, the R8 character of the surrounding neighborhoods. This, this photograph is of Burnside Avenue, showing you it is a vital and vibrant retail corridor, but as Bronx Community College sits just at the other end of it, Fordham Road just north, and Grand Concourse just to the east, with the, with the Burnside Avenue stop and Tremont Avenue BD stop right there, we feel has just a tremendous potential for a full commercial district in the future. Again, surrounding context, multifamily residential buildings. And again, bringing this, or mapping a commercial district today with the elevated rules, creating responsive building envelopes that respond to the elevated rail, really can do a lot to bolster this corridor and provide the vision for the Burnside Avenue and Tremont Avenue connections into the future. And then lastly, I'll discuss the mapping of our highest density proposal, R9A. As you can see from the overall zoning map, we're mapping it very judiciously, just at two spots in the southern portion of the rezoning area. The northern of which is really an important fulcrum, really, it's the, it's the knot that connects the Edward L. Grant Highway with 170th Street, just a block or two off of that 170th Street 4 train stop. That coupled with the topography and available sites in the area, really make it appropriate for this level of density, we believe. And then down further to the south, you have connections not only to the 167th Street 4 train, but this is just blocks north of Yankee Stadium and the 161st Street Metro-North Mass Transit Station. And then off of the corridor, you have the confluence of many wide streets. You have Edward L. Grant Highway, Cromwell Avenue and Jerome Avenue, all coming together. And really, what is shown here is if Jerome Avenue itself is a valley, this is really the bowl of that valley, and again, presents opportunities for increased residential development through this land use proposal. And again, you know, the sort of future look at fulfilling the vision of the Jerome Avenue corridor with mapping these districts in mind. And then finally, leaving areas maintained for their current zoning designations of M1 and C8 districts. There are four unique clusters of these zoning designations that we are electing to maintain zoned as-is through, and is an important part of our overall zoning framework. As I, as I mentioned throughout, we will be proposing C24 commercial overlays, again, mapped along with the residential uses to create that continuity and cohesiveness, not only along Jerome Avenue, but along where, some of the other major corridors, including Edward L. Grant, where commercial overlays are not mapped today. And all of this gets us to the proposed zoning map, and then when we think about that as it corresponds with the public realm improvements and other strategies that we discussed today, really, we really believe that, that all of these things work together to create the vision as, as defined by the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan. So again, there's zoning text amendments associated with this application. We'll be mapping a special district that has the rules for lots against the elevated rail, as well as irregular lot allowances, hotel special permit and active ground floor uses. And we will be mapping mandatory inclusionary housing in any area where we are increasing the residential capacity over what is currently zoned there today. And then finally, the city map change is the last action I'll discuss today. I mentioned earlier that there is a unbuilt street that is adjacent to a city-owned lot. We are proposing to de-map that street, combine it with the adjacent lot to create parkland just off of the Edward L. Grant Highway. And I would mention too, that this is a really key, key location as it sits right in the middle between the recently opened High Bridge as well as the 170th Station. So it's, again, just adding to that rhythm of the corridor, embolstering the corridors that really knit these communities together. Transforming a vacant plot of land that anybody can walk by and really think, well, shouldn't that be an X, Y, or Z, and turning it into mapped parkland for, you know, the, the future opportunities to create really great open spaces. Our environmental review did indicate significant adverse impacts in construction, shadows, transportation and community facilities. I would also mention that throughout our public process and at our scoping hearing, we were asked to study in our environmental review a number of other properties. So if you'll see in your DEIS, there is an expanded area alternative. We have undergone those studies to ensure that any discussions throughout the public review process will remain in scope. So again, the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan really is more than a sum of its parts. We hope that we demonstrated some of the detail, but also the breadth of the planning work that has been done, is ongoing and will continue far, far along after the land use actions are voted on. To really transform the corridor from what it is today to an area where housing opportunities are abundant, stations, key stations are mapped with land uses and subsequently improved in the public realm to bolster access, to create connections between key institutions like Bronx Community College and the neighborhoods around it, and as well as to shape buildings to respond to the constraints that are around them today. And those coupled with pedestrian safety and public realm improvements will all create the vision for the Jerome Avenue corridor as outlined by the plan.